And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda, what I'm going to ask for a motion to approve, but I'd like to withdraw item nine from the agenda. And then I might juggle item eight around a little bit depending on when Commissioner Poppins gets on the phone since I think we've got a lot of people here for that. But we'll see how that plays out. So with that, I would consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll still move.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to the opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to address the commission? I'm hearing a microphone. Who's on? Commissioner Poppins, are you with us? Seeing none and hearing none, we'll move on to the commissioner report for information purposes only. Are there any commissioners that would like to say something?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Saturday night, the Lincoln County Fairground Foundation had its second fundraiser for building the 4-H buildings out there. And it was absolutely well-attended event. And they did a really good job. Hopefully, they're raising a lot of money out there for their 4-H buildings. But I will tell you this, I was absolutely surprised pleasantly by how many people were out there. There must have been at least 150, maybe 200 people at the fundraiser. So very well-attended, and I guess it just speaks very highly of our 4-H program and the parents and the kids. And so they're doing good things out there.
Awesome.
I also want to say that Commissioner Gibbons and I left a few dollars on the auction. One of them, we will be presenting back to you as a plaque that you can hang on the wall, which drew a lot of high bidding. Short story between that and between Commissioner Gibbons and I. Unfortunately, I won, meaning I got to pay, so.
All right. Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, good morning.
Did you have anything you'd like to report?
No, that's fine. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and move on to regular business. We have a public hearing set for 8:35, so we have a couple of minutes. Just wondering, I'd like to move item eight, if we think we can get it done, up to the front of the line. We had our public hearing on that at the last commission meeting. We're not taking any public comment today. We tabled that item for rezoning a portion of property legally described as the north half of the northeast quarter, Section 18, from the I-1 light industrial to the I-2 general industrial. We had a motion to approve the rezone and a second. And so I think it's time for us to go ahead and call that roll call vote. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Hold on.
There's been no motion to take it off the table yet, has there?
Oh, okay.
I was just going to ask, what are we voting on?
It'd be item eight. So we did have a motion and a second, and then we tabled it. So Bill, we need to take it off the table first, right?
Correct.
Okay. Well, then I would consider a motion to take that off of the table.
I was the individual that put that back on. And the reason that I wanted to do that was to go back and check all of the concerns that had been registered. And also to look at safeguards that could be in place. So while this may not be a very popular situation, but after talking to our planning and zoning director, and after listening to what he had to say about what a conditional use permit can cover, I looked over the concerns that each of the individuals that have expressed their concerns on this. And this isn't an easy situation. I want you to know that.
Commissioner Schmidt, could we?
But so consequently, I will, I will move.
Can we take this off the table first?
Hang on, one moment, one moment. I know everybody wants to rush this thing through. I will move that we remove this from the table for an active vote.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion's off the table. We do have a first motion and a second motion to approve the rezone. Commissioner Schmidt, you were speaking, so I'll give the floor back to you.
I really don't, I, upon my vote, I'm going to move that in addition to this, that our planning and zoning director immediately work with the citizens of Worthing to make sure that their concerns are understood and covered by a potential conditional use permit for this piece of property.
So is it, are we ready to vote, then? Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, so I think, Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
I understand what Commissioner Schmidt was saying. He wanted to make a motion, but there's already a motion on the table.
Correct.
So I don't know if he was just speaking rhetorically.
No, this was just for the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it. So I just want to say a few things, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So I looked, went back last night, read through all of the materials that had been submitted to the commission, read through all the paperwork documents. I want to thank all the citizens of the community who gave their testimony. I think it was very respectful, and it comes from the heart, and they care very much about their community. There were 300-plus people who signed a petition. So they're pretty concerned about this. And that means, and we took an extra week to consider this as well. So I think having the opportunity to take that extra week was very helpful, given the fact that there's so much interest in this. I went back and read through the county's comprehensive plan. And this is, this is an interesting line. This was written a number of years ago. But it said, "Lincoln County is expected to grow to a population of between 45,891 and 48,986 by the year 2025." And here we are in 2021, and the Census Bureau estimates are somewhere around, you know, I'm kind of gaming this a little bit, 66 to 68,000. So we've blown past that estimate in terms of our comprehensive plan. And I've had a number of conversations with Toby Brown Planning and Zoning about this. We, you know, we do need to update our comprehensive plan for the future. One of the things I was frustrated about in this process is clearly, I don't think that we have the mechanisms in place to account for, we don't have the best mechanisms in place to account for the kind of future growth that's, that we're seeing right now. Because we, this is one of those prime examples in, that is particular to this area of the state, and Lincoln County in particular, where the ag community hits the urban community or prospective urban growth and development, i.e. from the city of Worthington. Worthing, excuse me. Keep saying Worthington. I grew up in Little Rock, Iowa. So I grew close, grew up close to Worthington, Minnesota. My apologies. But I'm reading through the comprehensive plan here and noticed that issue. So I don't think our comprehensive plan is in the best position to be able to account for some of these things. But a couple of the other things, and this is the one thing I wanted to point out, is land use, location, and design criteria in rural, commercial, and industrial areas. Because this is a rezoning from, or to, I guess, from light I-1 to I-2 industrial. And in our comprehensive plan, what we have here for rural, commercial, industrial areas is development limited by availability of services, buffering from adjacent commercial and industrial uses, adequate wastewater systems. And then, under commercial, industrial, it goes on to say agriculturally-related businesses. And I'm reading from page, pages 40 and 41. Commercial, industrial, agriculturally-related businesses, and these are just bullet points. Adjacent to county and state highways, necessary rail access for industrial uses, controlled access onto major roadways, adequate buffering from neighboring uses, convenient siting of commercial uses for customers, hard surface driveways and parking areas. Well, what we have here is, this piece of land is adjacent to a county and state highway. In fact, it's adjacent to the interstate. The rail access is not applicable. Controlled access onto major roadways, that is something that could probably be dealt with through a conditional use permit. Adequate buffering from neighboring uses can be dealt with through a conditional use permit. Convenient siting of commercial uses for customers, it's not really a retail store per se. And hard surface driveways and parking areas, that is also something that has to be dealt with through a conditional use permit. But one of the issues that we find in our comprehensive use plan is the policy of attempting to make these kinds of industrial or commercial, industrial uses comport with, with agribusiness. And I think in this instance, we have a agribusiness purported use that wants to site on land that is currently zoned as I-1 and wants to move to I-2. And so I think the use, or at least the rezone, excuse me, is consistent with our comprehensive plan. I know that that is not what the folks from Worthing want to hear. But at the same time, we had three attorneys come in here, two of them for the opponents, and I listened very carefully to what they said last time, and neither one of them said that this could not be done. What they said is, there were perhaps better ways to do it. And I think with regard to some of the better ways to do it, those are things that can be taken care of through the conditional use permit process. Again, like I said, read through all of the concerns that folks had from the last meeting, went through my notes. Many of those concerns are conditional use permit type activities that can be controlled or mitigated through that process. And the one thing I would say to the applicants here is, get, I hope, I hope, you are prepared to work with the community and to work with county zoning and planning and zoning, because there are a lot of concerns that are going to come at you through that conditional use permit process. And it's not just going to be penny-ante concerns. It is going to be significant. It is going to be substantial, from what I heard. And, you know, we got a process here where this, this, the applicant has bounced around from three different locations, and now they're on the fourth location. And I've been involved in those processes where an applicant is starting to get towards the end, and they just want to get it done. And I think from my perspective, I'm not interested in wanting to appease their lack of ability to find a location. But in this instance, their application does seem to comport with the condition, or with our comprehensive use plan. In particular, agribusiness. You know, we have a very generous process in this county for the siting of agribusinesses. And when you look at under, under the different factors we have, their rezoning request does seem to comport with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Aaron's. I'm going to keep this moving. We do have to get done by 9:00 a.m. for that second item agenda, so I'd like to move this along. Any further discussion on the motions that are on the board?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, but please keep it very brief, because I want to circle back and get item one done before the Zoom meeting.
Sure. I'd like to say that I appreciate Commissioner Aaron's take on this and his evaluation of it. I think there's some good points there. At the same time, as a District Two representative, I do realize, and as an agricultural producer and a livestock producer, a year ago, we were in quite a different situation with COVID and many of these so-called packing plants that were closing and where to go with our animals. And yet, at the same time, the processing plants, from the data and so forth that I read, were able to weather the storm much better than, than most of these packing plants and remained open, and it was a vital part. They're, they're very popular right now, and so on and so forth. But at the same time, I must re-confer that I also represent five municipalities in District Two, and Worthing is one of them. And there's an awful lot of people that are not happy that this is going to be stuck into their backyard, and they actually receive zero tax dollars from it, most of it going, of course, to Lincoln County and to the Lenox School District and to Lynn Township. I have not heard from one producer in my district that, hey, this is something that we gotta have. I haven't heard from the Lenox School District that said, this is something that we gotta have. I've received none of that information. And I think that's quite interesting as well. The infrastructure leading to this location is less than adequate. It's unsatisfactory. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I realize there's things in our comprehensive plan that approve this, but at the same time, there still is logic and common sense that needs to come into place. And I admire the people in the Worthing municipality who are putting efforts on quality of life versus, I guess, some of the other factors that we're talking about today. So with that in mind, I know this commission has dealt with other issues with quality of life on other sections of, of this county. And we have to, again, listen to some of those matters as well. So I want to, people to understand that when they do hear my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gibbon. I'm going to ask, Sean, would you please call the roll on the, on the motions that are pending?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. We're going to move on to item one. Toby, are you going to tee that up for us? Thank you.
This is a petition from Gene Pesca and Darren Hagie. They're property owners here, shown on the screen. They are petitioning to vacate the right-of-way or the alley that is adjacent to their property. This is the subject platted alleyway through the property. Both petitioners own property on both sides of the platted, platted right-of-way or platted alleyway in this case. Location of this, as you can see, this is subdivision, is the Fountain Estate subdivision. It is adjacent to the city of Harrisburg. This is the Harrisburg city limits here. This petition has been submitted to the auditor's office. This is a scheduled public hearing for this petition. Petition is in conformance to a state statute. Staff does recommend approval of this petition. Upon approval of petition, the applicants have a pending plat with the city of Harrisburg, which would vacate, then essentially, or what the vacated would combine, the two, would combine the subject parcels that they own and would combine them into one parcel. So again, staff does recommend approval of this. This is a public hearing, and the petitioners are in attendance this morning if you have any questions.
Thank you. Applicant is here? Do you want to come up and state your name and address and tell us what the plan is? And you don't have, you don't have to say much. I think Toby probably covered it, but go for it.
My name is Gene Pesca, 2027, 2025, circle. And my property is the one adjacent to the gravel road there. This is something that, quite honestly, was, I bought the property in 2003, and when I bought that property, that alleyway and stuff like that was supposed to have been vacated and everything at that point. And quite honestly, as far as there is, we've checked with Lincoln County title and stuff like that, all the records of that have been destroyed because they said there was a flood that had took place there. So we are kind of left here, and we just came on this here, my neighbor Darren Hagan and I just came up on this here probably in the last six months, finding out that there's an issue here. So I guess, I think we produced all the evidence or everything that we needed to give. The HOA has granted us ownership of that and stuff, so that's about it. I wasn't prepared to speak, really.
That's all right. You did just fine, Gene.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Gene? If not, is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the application? I don't see anybody jumping up, anybody that wants to speak against the application. And I don't see anybody jumping up for that. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve.
Gene, out of curiosity, why is that, why is that even there?
Very good question. We have no idea. We have no idea where that was there. It was never used. It was never used. There was a tree grove right there. The engineer that platted it and stuff like that has passed away. So I've tried to reach out to them, and, you know, that, the guy that took over his practice, and nobody's got any records of what happened there. And here again, I believe it just some, it just fell, it was supposed to get vacated, and it fell through the cracks. And I've been trying to follow the record and stuff like that through Lincoln County and stuff like that, and there's nothing there anymore.
Madam Chair, and as we, Gene, you and I have been down, we've seen it. I'll move for approval on that.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We do have, thank you, Gene. You bet. Good luck. We do have a Zoom call in, and I believe there's going to be several counties attending. So I'm going to take a short break right now until 9:00 so that we can get that Zoom call set up and make sure that it's running properly.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want me to go in with you when you go in, or you already done that?
Well, spoken.
Well, they better.
Okay.
Jake, are we ready? Okay. Well, everyone, good morning. From Lincoln County, we are privileged today to have with us our CEO and Matt Chase from NACO, who has taken time out of his busy schedule to share with us how the counties are going to be able to use the COVID money that we have available for us. So consequently, Matt, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I would want to, I thank you especially for taking time out of your busy schedule because I know what that looks like, to share with the counties because there is a definite interest in how they're going to be better utilizing that funds that are, one-time funds that are available. And there are multiple of needs and there are multiple of ideas, so I thought we would go directly to the source and hear it from you as to how we can put that to the best use. So Matt, I will give you the floor. And one other thing, I know there will be questions, and if we do have questions, you want to put them in a chat room, and we do not have time for those. I've been assured that if you put your question and your name and address, that NACO will address all of those individually and provide you with the answers if we don't get a chance to cover them today. So Matt, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. It's great to see you virtually. And want to thank you and also Commissioner Robert Hill, who serve on the NACO board and represents South Dakota counties with the National Association of Counties, and of course, to Bob and Chris at the State Association. Thank you for your partnership. I'm going to dive right in and, and really get into what's called the American Rescue Plan. It is now the law of the land. President Biden did sign it into law, so it's no longer a concept, but it's actually law of the land. And before I do that, though, I want to just kind of set the framing that the role of the National Association of Counties is to be the voice of county government at the federal level, that we are part of the nation's intergovernmental system between federal, state, local, and tribal officials. We are not registered lobbyists. We're actually part of the intergovernmental partnership. And I think that's really important, particularly in these very partisan times, to remind people that our job is to promote the best interests of county governments and hopefully our local communities. And so throughout this pandemic, what we really focused on was educating our federal colleagues about the roles and responsibilities of county governments. We're focused on making sure that federal policymakers understood that our 40,000 elected officials and our 3.6 million county employees, over 1% of all Americans are employed by county governments, that you all were truly on the front lines of this pandemic, not just the public health, but also the broader economic and community impacts. And you can see your neighbors to the north here in, in Cass County, North Dakota, were touting this We Are Counties campaign. And so we have really been spending a lot of time educating federal policymakers on all the different touchpoints that you all have with this pandemic. So throughout this process, Congress has, has passed four or five really key bills. And throughout the process, NACO focused on getting direct federal aid for all counties. In the earlier bills, particularly a bill called the CARES Act, the money flowed to counties 500,000 and above, and then to the governors who could voluntarily distribute down to the counties. So throughout this, we doubled down and said, no, we need the money to go directly to counties. We don't want the states playing games. We want flexibility for counties, but we also support reasonable guardrails. We understand that these are precious taxpayer dollars, and we want to make sure that they're invested, not just spent. And so we supported reasonable guardrails. So that's kind of the framing of how we got to this process. And I will tell you, going back to last summer, a lot more of the local aid was going to flow to cities, towns, and townships and counties. That's why we were so aggressive in really touting the county role. We wanted to make sure we got an equal distribution. So everything that I talk about today is on the NACO COVID-19 Clearing House. Hopefully, you can find it. We're, we're trying to change our website so you can find it a little bit easier. And what I'm going to talk about today are the state and local fiscal recovery funds. That's the official name of the U.S. Treasury money that will flow to states, tribes, territories, and local governments. So if you click on the state and local fiscal recovery section, you will come to a resource hub dedicated just to this fund. We have a full analysis of the American Rescue Plan. We have the bill text. We have summaries. We have our letters that we've been sending to Treasury, following up on some of the meetings that we have on real technical questions, and we have some estimates for the county allocations. So again, the American Rescue Plan is now the law of the land. It will invest about $1.9 trillion in, across the country, and that includes everything from vaccines, COVID testing, aid for K through 12 schools, there were direct stimulus payments to all Americans below a certain income. There's economic assistance, a lot of money for childcare, and then, of course, there's this pot of money, 362 billion in direct fiscal aid for state and local governments. There's an additional 1.5 billion for public lands counties. And that's where we're going to spend our time today, is the 65.1 billion in direct federal aid to counties. So just to map out the different buckets in this $362 billion pot of money, you can see these two buckets in yellow, the 65.1 billion in direct county aid, and then the revenue share for public lands counties, which is an additional 1.5 billion. But you can see here that Treasury has a lot of work to do on all of these different categories. Each subgroup has its own rules and some nuances, so Treasury really does have their hands full trying to write this guidance. So how's the money going to be divided for local governments? Again, 65.1 billion will go directly from the U.S. Treasury to county governments, including Perrisons in Louisiana and Burrows in Alaska. If you are one of the counties that typically gets a direct allocation from the HUG Community Development Block Grant Program, you'll get the higher of what you would get under CBPG versus the population distribution. Where people are getting confused is there is another 65.1 billion for cities, towns, and townships, villages, and smaller boroughs. For cities above 50,000, they'll get the money directly, and for those below 50,000, their allocation will go to the governor, and then the governor or the state will suballocate that down. People are getting confused on this, but again, all of the county money will go directly from the U.S. Treasury to the county. For your smaller cities, towns, and townships, their money will flow through the state. Of course, we're the National Association of Counties, so we focus on really targeting the money for the counties. We've been working with Treasury on the guidance. It could come out as early as today, but we do expect it in the next probably 10 days. And we expect Treasury to open the portal for you to register by May 10, that I can come back to that during the Q and A. So what is the pre-award certification process? Basically, Treasury came out with a notice and said, okay, counties, get ready to work with us to receive your allocation. And to do that, you need to have a DUNS number, which is a registration with a group called Dun &amp; Bradstreet that looks and kind of monitors different businesses. You need what's called a SAM registration from the General Services Administration, from the federal GSA. A SAM registration is essentially a federal contractor ID. So you get your DUNS number first, then you can register with GSA through the Federal Contract and Clearing House, and also get your banking information ready. The few counties in South Dakota that are receiving literally, you know, $20 million or so, you want to talk to your banker too to make sure your bank can handle this amount of money. You'll need your EIN number, which is your tax identification number. You'll need to identify the chief elected official for the county to actually authorize receipt of the money and to be accountable for the money. In South Dakota, it's probably your board chair in most cases. And then you'll need, again, your banking information for the wire transfer. What is very different from this program than most federal programs is you're probably used to cash flowing like FEMA, and then FEMA reimburses you. In this case, the Treasury will send you half the money upfront, and then no, earlier than a year later, so next May probably, you'll get your second tranche of money. So nationally, we've identified almost all counties have a SAM registration. There's about 116 nationwide that don't. So again, make sure you have a DUNS number and a SAM registration. I will send these slides to Chris in the South Dakota Counties group. You can have them and you can use them. We also have some slides hidden here that can give you the step-by-step how you go through the process. Again, you know, here they are. Quickly, you, you need a DUNS number, and here's the site that you'll go to. You'll need a SAM registration, as I've mentioned. If you don't have a SAM registration right now, it can take about three weeks to get that, and it could delay your receipt of your Treasury money. We still expect that you would get it, but it may be delayed. So really follow these steps. Go to SAM.gov and either renew your registration or secure it. As I mentioned earlier, we'll, you'll need to get ready with your EIN, your banking information, and Treasury has not released the guidance yet, but we expect it literally today to within the next 10 days. They're getting very close. All right. What can you use it for? There's four main categories for eligible use of funds. There's also a couple of things that you cannot use it for, and I'll get into that in a minute. So let's step back and understand the context of this bill. It really is to help with the immediate public health crisis as well as the associated economic impacts that have occurred. So number one, Congress says you can use this money to respond to the public health emergency for COVID, including its negative economic impacts. So you can use it for assistance to households. We're still getting clarity if you could, if that would include property tax relief. We think it should include that, but we're confirming with Treasury that that would be ineligible use. You can use it for grants or loans to small businesses, to nonprofits. Congress specifically wanted to make clear that you could help industries like tourism, travel, and hospitality that have been really harmed by COVID-19. And so I want to be clear that the including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, that's not exclusive, meaning Congress just wanted to make clear that Treasury and the recipients knew that these were eligible. It's not, it's not limited to those, but they wanted to make sure that that was clearly eligible. At the last hours of the legislative process, to get the 50 votes in the Senate, they included this provision, number two, which is premium pay for essential workers, where premium pay is defined, you can provide an additional $13 per hour, up to $13 per hour, to an eligible essential worker, both employed by the county, as well as the county could suballocate money to an employer in the community to provide essential premium pay. The key on all of these are that you may. There is no requirement to provide the premium pay. It's just an eligible use. So you can provide an additional $13 per hour to any one individual, and it's also capped at $25,000 to any single eligible worker. Number three is a little bit more complicated, and this is around lost revenue, where you would go back to your full fiscal year prior to the pandemic, so whatever your full fiscal year was before March 1st, 2020, and you would benchmark your revenue versus what it is today and into the future, and you could use it to backfill lost revenue. And so this includes things like property taxes, but also if your court systems have had reductions or your parks and recs, your libraries, any other sort of user fees, you could also use it to backfill. We're still waiting for guidance from Treasury to really differentiate some of the nuances that we're expecting here, but number three, this lost revenue is intended to help you recover, obviously, lost revenue. Number four is they allow for water sewer and broadband investments, quote, necessary investments in water sewer and broadband. The general intent here is to support infrastructure, and again, we're waiting for Treasury to issue its guidance. We've had a lot of conversations with Treasury around this, as well as broader capital infrastructure improvements. There's a lot of questions coming in from counties about can you retrofit your jails? Can you retrofit your courthouses? Can you build new public health centers? All sorts of questions around capital infrastructure, and that's been at the top of our list with our dialogue with Treasury. So what can't you use it for? Well, the number one thing that you cannot use it for is to touch any pension funds. So if you're using it for payroll support, you'll have to pull out any of your pension contributions and use county funds or other funds to use it for your pension. So that's really important. We tried to get it changed where active employees could, could use it for payroll support, including pensions. It was really a political third route, and there just wasn't any interest in changing this provision. And so we tried to explain that, you know, maybe you don't use it for pension enhancements or something, but again, it's crystal clear, you cannot use any of the Treasury funds to be deposited into a pension fund. Any failure to comply with these rules, you'll have to pay back the Treasury, and so I would really pay attention to this. The first bullet, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on unless we have Q and A, but there, there are provisions just for state governments where the state is not supposed to intentionally reduce its tax revenue and backfill it with the Treasury money. There are federal lawsuits now. Several attorneys generals have, have issued a lawsuit against this provision. It does not apply directly to counties. Where it may impact counties is if the state tries to cut your county aid through the regular state appropriations, but as far as the Treasury money goes, that provision only applies to state governments. So a couple of changes to these late provisions from earlier bills. So again, Treasury will distribute the money directly to counties. You'll have to go on, register on a portal here in probably the next 10 days. You'll have until December 31st, 2024, to spend the money. That deadline was changed from earlier bills where it really originally didn't have a deadline, so you'll have several years to spend the money. The other change was that, again, Treasury will send you 50% of the money upfront in what they call the first tranche, and then the second payment would be no earlier than 12 months after the first payment. So around mid-May of next year is what we're anticipating. There will be reporting requirements, so you'll need to set up an accounting system to track how you're spending the money. And just like anything in life, nothing is free, so there will be periodic reports. And again, we're working with Treasury on what will those reports look like. If you don't comply with any of the provisions, again, you'd have to return the money to the U.S. Treasury. The estimates. So we're estimating that just South Dakota counties, not including the states, not including your, your tribes or your other local governments, just the county governments, will receive about $171.5 million. These are not official estimates yet, but we helped Congress write the formulas. And so these should be in the ballpark of where South Dakota counties should get. You can go on our website and see the estimate. Again, I wouldn't go out and spend it yet, but you can start some planning. For some of you, it's pretty significant. For others, you can probably dedicate a little bit to your your staff, maybe, or do a couple of projects. But again, it's, it should be helpful. I want to pivot to some other buckets of money in the bill. For those of you interested in broadband projects, your state will receive an additional allocation of money through what's called the Coronavirus Capital Projects Fund. So they'll receive at least a hundred million. They'll probably receive more than that to dedicate to broadband infrastructure, particularly around projects to enable work, education, and health monetary remotely. And so if you're interested in broadband, you can use your local county dollars that you're going to receive, plus your state will have additional money for broadband. Another pot of money that will impact some of you if you receive federal payment liu of taxes or PIL or the federal Secure Rule Schools money. Senator Rod Wyden put in an additional one point five billion for general purpose aid for those counties that have federal public lands. It is different than the PIL and SRS formula. They're going to come up with a new formula based on the economic conditions, public land holdings, unemployment, and some other indicators. And this money will come out later in the fall and will come in two fiscal years, half in in 2022 and half in 2023. And you'll see here in the second bullet that the public lands money can be used for any governmental purpose other than a lobbying activity. So it's intended to be incredibly flexible, essentially public, uh, general purpose money. When Senator Wyden introduced this provision, he specifically directed Treasury to work with NACO and the State Association of Counties, particularly our Western Interstate Region, on developing the formula. We're already talking with Treasury. We've had some good preliminary conversations. And so again, that will be additional aid on top of the other aid. So again, we've been working with Treasury every day, educating them about the roles and responsibilities of counties, the different fiscal years, your different revenue sources. And we are hopeful that that they'll come out with guidance that's flexible and user-friendly. For you, we have what we call the NACO COVID-19 Recovery Clearinghouse, where we're bringing together the individual counties, the State Association, some of our affiliates, like the county treasurers, auditors, and lawyers, working with Treasury on the guidance and on implementation ideas. On our website, you can go on the Clearinghouse, and we have two submission boxes here. One is ask any question. And we have a team ready to answer and ready to work with Treasury on any of your questions. Can we spend the money on X? What is the reporting requirement here? And as Treasury comes out with the guidance, this Clearinghouse will help you get your answers. The other thing that we want to do is tell the county story. How are you planning to invest this money in your community? How are you helping those maybe that are unemployed or some of your small businesses that have suffered? How are you helping build our public health resilience? What are the things that you plan to use the money for? Please help us tell the county story and make sure that we can report back to Congress that we're using this money effectively. That's really important to us here at NACO. So we are having our annual conference in person plus hybrid, July ninth through the twelfth. We moved it from Austin, Texas, or Travis County, Texas, to Prince George's County, right outside of DC, so that we can have a lot more federal officials at the conference this year. It will have some virtual options for most sessions. And but we are going to be meeting in person, trying to get back to normal. And of course, trying to rebuild that partnership with the federal government through COVID to really make sure that you have access to the key decision makers. So with that, Jim, I can I can wrap up and, you know, take any questions. I couldn't see the chat. I'll pull the chat up and see if there's anything that we should go back to.
Matt, you indicated that you thought the Treasury would be coming out with the guidelines within the next ten days. And will that then be published on the NACO website so that counties that have plans to, I think one of the most prevalent ones, Matt, will be for building purposes? I know we've talked about infrastructure. There may be money coming from infrastructure. There may be money coming from other things. But for counties that face building, where they have to construct, uh, redesign their courthouse, they have to build jails, they have to build facilities. Do you have any feel on that, whether that will be uh, received by Treasury as a positive way to spend the funds?
Yeah, so right now, I can't say anything with certainty. But what we are pushing Treasury for, of course, is capital infrastructure improvements tied to lessons learned from COVID. So the jails are a great example. You know, could you rebuild the jail? We don't know yet. But we have learned that jails are hotspots for for trans- transmission of the virus. So if you need to retrofit your jail due to COVID or just public health, we're hoping that that will be eligible. Things like roads and bridges, we're not as optimistic. But again, we're going to have to wait and see. Uh, the other thing that we are really encouraging counties to think about is how do you use the Treasury money to free up local county dollars and use your local money for other things that might be in the gray area or not allowed? So if they allow say payroll support for all public safety, like they did in the CARES Act, could you work with your sheriff to free up some of the sheriff's normal budget for other things? Now, I understand it's challenging, it's politics, and you got to get a lot of people on the same page. But the point being is use the Treasury money for those things that are one hundred percent crystal clear eligible. And if you could free up some of your general funds, and it does vary state to state on state prohibitions on using like general funds for roads and bridges, but try and free up, you know, your your normal budget by using the Treasury money and then directing your local dollars to those things that are questionable. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I will open it up to see whether there are other questions that can be, uh, held at this time across the state.
And and I do see some in the chat. I'll just go through them real quick, if that's what take, Mr.? That yes, we'll make this PowerPoint available. I'll send it to Chris, and we'll we'll get it out to all of you. On the definition of essential employees, we don't know for certain what that definition will be. But we do think a good number of county employees will qualify. Again, it's up to the county if you want to provide it. It's not shall, it is may. And remember that you may have employers in your county approach you for assistance with premium pay. That also is allowed, not required. For example, I know of a couple of rural electric cooperatives that approached the county about pandemic pay for their frontline workers. Um, on the payroll issue and pensions, you're really going to need to work with your payroll providers if you use both or in-house or if you outsource it to separate out your salary and other fringe from the pension contribution. So some of you do obviously provide a matching, a county match for for your retirement, your pension system. You're going to have to pull that out and do an accounting transfer, basically, so you're not using Treasury money. We will probably have webinars on that and best practices and work with auditors on that. It, again, it's something that we thought, but just the politics around pensions were such that there was no way we could change it.
Any questions out there? Chris, anything from the auditors?
At this point, I do not see any questions. So thank you so much, Matt. We appreciate it, and Jim.
Matt, let- Matt, with, we ended a little early. We have a pretty full schedule here in Lincoln County. But Matt, thank you so much for taking time out of your schedule to deliver all that information. I think you answered several questions as to what we re- really know on the resources that we have and what we can expend them on. And we'll look forward to seeing from NACO what the Treasury actually comes up with. So from Lincoln County to you, Matt, in DC, have a wonderful day, and thank you for your information and your time.
Thank you. Just just real quick, I want to thank all the South Dakota counties. You're all members of NACO. I also want to just do a very quick shout out that it's been so impressive to watch. We've had eighty-three county participants from forty counties in the NACO High Performance Leadership Academy, our online leadership program with General Colin Powell. And I just think that's an impressive showing and the commitment to leadership development by South Dakota counties. So thank you. And also, just on this Treasury money or any other federal programs, call on us. You know, we're here to work for you. We, you have an open door, and just reach out to us, call us, email us, and we'll get back to you as soon as possible. So thank you.
Matt, I have one question.
Okay.
We have one question.
One question for you, Matt. I I know that you're sending out the PowerPoint, but I noticed the meeting's being recorded.
Okay.
Can the recording be sent out so that we can play a full portion of it?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Jake, thank you. Without you, this would never have been possible. So thank you. Madam Chair, we ended four minutes early.
That was all really good information. We're going to move on to item three on our agenda, which is public hearing.
This is a public hearing for the purpose of adopting the following supplements to the 2021 budget. Supplement adding eight hundred dollars in account 2334331, eight hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty-three cents in account 233366, three hundred six dollars and seventy-eight cents in account 2334322411, twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents in account 2334322412, one thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars in account 2334322425, three hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-one cents in account 2334322428, nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars and eight cents in account 10137100, and the same amount in account 23349110000. And if you would like, I would like to explain those so that they make a little more sense.
Please do that.
All right, so first, I'll go through the revenues. We had some garbage hauler license paid in 2021. They're going to start going into the general fund. And just so everybody's on the same page, all of these budget supplements are to clean up the budget for the transfer station. So that's that's what this is all for, is to make that nice and tidy. So the the eight hundred dollars in 2334331 is garbage hauler licenses paid in 2021, and they're going to start going into the general fund now. Um, the other revenue is for 233366. That is a refund from a prior year expense um, from the city of Sioux Falls tipping fees. Uh, so it's my understanding that there was just pay payment being made and that we were, we're always taking garbage there. And this was a refund from overpayment from the year prior, from the city of Sioux Falls. So then we have four expenditures. These are wages and expenses paid. These are the 2334322 accounts, which are the 411, the 412, 425, and the 428. So its salaries and wages was the three hundred six dollars and seventy-eight cents. The OASI for twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. Repairs and maintenance for one thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. And utilities paid for three hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. And then those last two items for the nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-one and eight cents. This is giving budget authority for the transfer of cash that is actually item four. And so that's to move that cash to the general fund instead of having it present with the transfer station.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? If not, this is a public hearing. We need to put this out for anybody to speak.
Yes.
All right. Um, anybody here to speak in favor of the supplement requests? Is there anybody here to speak against the supplement request? I don't see anybody, and I don't hear anybody on that issue. So if not, I would consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the supplements to the 2021 budget uh, as per uh, what is stated in the agenda and what was read off by Sean today.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Go ahead, Sean.
He's no longer with us, okay. Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. I'll go ahead and move on to item four, which is related item.
It is. So this is to approve the now budgeted cash transfer from the transfer station to the general fund in the amount of that nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars and eight cents that we just gave budget authority for.
So move, Mr. Chairman, on the transfer.
Thank you, thank you. Got a motion by Schmidt, a second by Commissioner Aaron's. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Item number five. Who's handling that?
I can handle that.
All right.
This is, uh, to award the bid for the lease of the farmland located within the northeast quarter of Section Thirty-Six Township One Hundred, Range Fifty-One West of the Fifth Prime Meridian, except the west three hundred seventy point four-two feet. Of the east, two thousand one hundred thirty-two point eight feet. Of the north, eight hundred twenty-three point one-seven of Lincoln County, South Dakota, but not including the temporary easement on the north end consisting of one hundred forty-two thousand nine hundred eleven square feet from May fourth to December thirty-first, 2021. This was read advertised as requested by the board for a one-year lease instead of a two-year lease. It received one bid that did come with a note. If you would permit me to read that for you.
Please do so.
The bid amount was for three thousand nine hundred dollars from Alan R. Ripentrop. And the note says, Sean Philmyer, Deputy Auditor, only thirty acres of the one hundred fifty-four acres are tillable, thus the low bid. Also, thousands of cubic dirt can be removed. Please take these factors into consideration. Thank you, Alan Ripentrop.
Madam Chair, I've moved for approval-
Second.
-of his application or his bid for that farmland.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Item number six. We have a first reading.
Sorry. This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as a portion, approximately ten acres. Northwest half, the north, north, northwest quarter, except H one and north two hundred eleven point five feet of east four hundred twelve feet. Section Thirty-three Township One Hundred North, R forty-nine West from the A one agricultural district to the C commercial district, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommendation for approval failed zero to five.
Good morning. Again, this is an application from Matthew Roach to rezone, as was just stated, approximately ten acres of the subject property. The ten acres would be right at the intersection of Two Seventy-second Highway eleven. Our location is properties approximately two miles to the east of the city of Harrisburg. The concept plan that was submitted with the application states that the applicant would subdivide the property and would subdivide it into eight lots. These eight lots, uh, would be utilized then in the future for a conditional use for contractor shops. Mr. Roach is part of Pride Built Homes. He would utilize one of the sites for his business, and then the rest would be sold. This application, as your- This application, as you're aware, was brought before you approximately a little over a year ago. That was denied by the Board of Commissioners at that time. Since then, the applicant has moved the driveway further to the east and then has identified, as you can see on the screen, that there would be a substantial stormwater detention on the property. Again, this property, like the last time, is within the city of Harrisburg's subdivision authority, so they have sole jurisdiction over the site improvements of the property. The applicant has submitted a concept plan, is in the process of working with the city of Harrisburg in a preliminary plan. I did include the notes that the city of Harrisburg staff submitted to the applicant, identified a number of things that would have to be addressed with the application. So, this is all conceptual. As part of the staff analysis, I include the staff report. The comprehensive plan for Lincoln County, as you're aware, the city of Harrisburg has updated their comprehensive plan and has identified growth areas beyond their current urban expansion area, which isn't shown in our comprehensive plan. So, the county's comprehensive plan identifies this area as future agricultural. However, the city of Harrisburg again updated their comprehensive plan. They have identified this area as future industrial. So, this use would be future commercial, which would be a less intense of type use. There is quite a significant amount of neighborhood opposition to this application. I just talked to the applicant late last week, and he is going out a number of the neighbors in that area. Number of the concerns that they have is, again, changing in the character of this particular area. There is no commercial within probably a mile of this site that's been zoned or utilized for that purpose. And then also the concern with the potential drainage impacts of this site, which, again, Planning Commission spent a lot of time talking about, but the county does not have jurisdiction or control or development over drainage on this particular piece of property because it falls within the city of Harrisburg. This is the first reading for this application, so, again, no public comment, but you can ask many questions that you have. You have scheduled the second reading and public hearing for this at your next meeting, which will be on the twenty-fifth. With that, I'd be happy to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Toby, the Planning and Zoning Board voted zero to five to not to approve?
Yeah, they did an affirmative motion on the application, and then that motion failed, zero to five.
Okay.
The recommendation of it, yes.
Thank you. I think, you know, for questions and things of that nature, maybe those are better left for the second reading.
Okay.
So, I would just ask that we go ahead and move on to item seven.
Item seven is the first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as Aggie's tract one, except lots one and two, west half, southwest quarter, section eleven, township one-hundred north, R forty-nine west from the A-one agricultural district to the RR rural residential district, and amending the official zoning map of the area of joint jurisdiction. The county planning commission recommends approval four to zero. The city planning commission recommends approval five to zero.
Okay. It's just stated this is an application from John Aggie, but I'll say it's the entire Aggie family. And so, this is a subject property is approximately just under forty acres in size. Subject property is about twenty-five hundred feet to the south of where the city of Sioux Falls limits end, which is on the north side of Fifty-seventh Street in Minnehaw County side. This subject property, and I'll show you the concept. This is in the Indian Hills area and then the Riverside subdivision area, which is just at the intersection of County Highway one-thirty-five and one-oh-two. The concept plan that was submitted with the application identifies that the property will be, once rezoned to rural residential, would be subdivided into conceptually twenty-five lots at this time. As part of your approval, you will also be considering the preliminary subdivision plan. And so, again, the preliminary subdivision plan is very basic engineering at this stage, and so, as we go through further engineering and approval of it, there might be one or so lots that might get identified for detention on the property. But the conceptual would be twenty-five residential lots on that property. As mentioned, this is in the joint jurisdictional area, so we look for guidance to the Shape Sioux Falls comprehensive plan, which is the comprehensive plan for the joint jurisdictional area. Up until a few months ago, this property was identified as a tier-three future residential property, which in layman's terms means that, according to the city's guidelines, that the developer would have had to extend infrastructure out approximately a mile from where it currently exists now. So, the applicant did work with city engineering staff. They reanalyzed the sewer basins and identified that this area is outside of a twenty-five-year future growth development area. So, again, layman's terms is that the city of Sioux Falls does not see themselves getting out here for infrastructure for twenty-five years plus, if any, at that point in time. So, staff, again, has reviewed the preliminary plan, submitted, as well as the rezoning. It is in conformance with the land use plan for the city of Sioux Falls, which identifies this as future residential. Again, as Sean did mention, the planning commission did recommend approval. This is the first reading, again, no public comment. You have scheduled the second reading for May twenty-fifth. That will be at seven o'clock at Carnegie Hall at City of Sioux Falls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and move on to item ten. We removed item nine. And item ten, Julia?
Good morning. What I'd like to do this morning is give you a couple of factors, some data, some information about, for the commission to consider about staff increases for 2022. And then I'd like to let that information digest, so to speak, and then circle back around next week. And the auditor's asking for an initial percentage increase for the budget as of next week. Does that sound okay?
Sure.
Okay.
With the request, yes.
Okay. Some factors for your consideration to consider, or for the commission to consider is first, CPIU.
When you say next week, we don't have a meeting next week. Or wait, yeah, we do. I'm thinking of the next week. Never mind, you're right.
I'm like, do we? Okay.
No, you're right.
Gotcha. Some items for your consideration. CPIU for the Midwest region for the end of March was two-point-nine percent. What that means is the cost of goods increased over last year by two-point-nine-six percent. So, that's the first factor for your consideration. The second is market. Now, there's a lot of talk about what market means. And market can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different organizations, but for our purposes here at Lincoln County... Jake, would you mind doing this? Showing this? Or do I need to do that? Oh, thank you. For our purposes here at Lincoln County, we did a compensation study roughly two years ago, and in that compensation, the commission approved these thirteen organizations as comparable entities. So, what that means is each year, we go out to these organizations and talk about what they did for increases to make sure that we're comparable in the marketplace. So, as you can see, these range in sizes and demographics, all of the things. But the hope, the strategy behind this is that you take thirteen different organizations, and no two organizations are alike. So, Lincoln County is not going to be like any of these. However, the hope is that you get somewhere close by comparing to thirteen different organizations. So, with that, when compiling that information, the average of increases for last year for those entities was two percent. Lincoln County gave one percent. Next factor is collective bargaining units. The commission agreed and approved a three-point-two-five percent increase for those covered underneath that unit. So, those that are currently certified receive the three-point-two-five percent increase. They received that last year and will receive that again for the next two years. Other factors for your consideration. Commissioner Aaron's, I think you said it best earlier, is that there's significant growth occurring. I think through the courthouse study, that's no surprise to anyone. In the courthouse study, it came out that fifty new positions are soon to be needed within the next ten years, which is an approximate increase of thirty percent. Next is staff turnover and attrition. In 2020, I alluded to this in a previous presentation, but in 2020, our turnover rate was seventeen percent, which is nearly double from the previous year. Currently, in the first quarter alone, we have six percent turnover this year. If we stay on track, that will be twenty-four percent turnover for this year, which is nearly three times as much as two years ago. So, another piece of that is demographics. I took a look at the demographics of where our staff is at. As of right now, twenty percent of our employees are at the age of early retirement. Twenty percent. So, at any given moment, depending on their financial situation, these individuals could retire. From a more national standpoint, there's two very reputable organizations that say this isn't just a Lincoln County situation, this isn't just a South Dakota situation, but because of COVID and all of the happenings behind that and what a challenging time that was, they're calling 2021 a turnover tsunami or the great COVID churn. And what they're forecasting is that turnover, regardless of the organization, is going to significantly increase. So, take Lincoln County out of the picture. Take our current turnover situation out of the picture, but they anticipate this to be a concern. As a point of comparison, last time this year, we posted ten positions. Right now, as of today, we've posted twenty. That is a two-hundred percent increase of open positions within our organization. That is huge. Next, local and national unemployment rate. At the end of March 2021, Lincoln County came in at an unemployment rate of two-point-five percent, while South Dakota was at two-point-nine. The national unemployment rate is at six-point-eight percent. To take this a step further, I reached out to our contact at Kelloland. And in Kelloland alone, they have roughly twenty-three hundred jobs available on that site alone. So, that doesn't take into account the ZipRecruiter, the Indeed, the other advertising agents that are out there. From a larger perspective, more global perspective, South Dakota has twenty-three thousand positions available. What that says is applicants can be more selective in the opportunities they choose. I'll give you just a recent example of, and maybe this will hit a little closer to home, is we posted a position. We posted the position for roughly four weeks, which is pretty typical. We had seven applicants. We extended three interviews. Of those three interviews, one individual took a job opportunity, another person didn't return the phone call. The third position person we interviewed were impressed with, extended an offer, but ultimately didn't select the position because of the pay. So, now, in an already tight job market, we don't have an applicant. So, based on all of this information, it's my recommendation for a staff or matrix increase for 2022 to be two-point-five percent to three-point-two-five percent for staff for 2022. One point I neglected to mention is that, just for historical purposes, when we did the compensation study two years ago, we implemented the study at that point based on expert's opinion. And by doing that, we implemented the study, and being good stewards of county taxpayer dollars, the commission said, okay, we're going to implement the study, but because of financial restraints, we're not going to give the market increase because it was a big undertaking from a financial standpoint. So, Jake, would you mind switching back over again? Thank you very much. So, here, this graph indicates two percent. The consultant recommended a two percent increase at that point. And because of financial restraints, Lincoln County wasn't able to give that two percent. So, we're two percent behind market at that point. Moving to the next year, which is last year, market suggested that we give a two to three percent increase. My recommendation was two percent. The commission was supportive, and because of financial restraints, we were only able to give one, and that left us behind by one percent there. So, that just gives a graph of what we've done in the past. This line here represents turnover. So, as the person, all of this information, as the person who oversees staffing and recruitment, I'm concerned. I'm concerned for Lincoln County to keep up with market and to find the number and the quality of people that we need. I mean, Commissioner Aaron's, to your point again, Lincoln County is experiencing significant growth. I think we've all said that time and time again. But with growth comes more needs from the county. With more needs comes more staffing to ensure that we're able to carry out those needs, those projects, those different tasks. But to get the people, we got to ensure that we can pay them and stay competitive within the marketplace. So, I worked with Sheri on these numbers. And lastly, I'll just leave you with this, is that if the commission is supportive of giving a three-point-two-five percent increase, that would be approximately point-seven-one percent of the annual budget. So, respectfully, after all of this information, I ask that you make these increases in the wage information to stay competitive within the marketplace a priority for 2022. Questions for me?
Julia, what's the real dollar amount of a... Three, of a two-point-five to three-point-two-five percent?
The difference between those?
Yeah.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. And then, so what is the dollar amount at two-point-five?
I believe this is off the cuff, but it's about one-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars.
And do you know what three-point-two-five is?
Off the cuff, I think it's...
It'd be one-sixty-nine plus fifty, three... Nineteen? No.
Two-nineteen.
Two-nineteen.
Commissioner, run those numbers again, would you please?
Yeah, so a two-point-five percent increase will be an expenditure of one-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand. If you go to three-point-two-five, it'll be an expenditure of two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand. That's above and beyond what we're currently paying.
Two percent was one-one-fifty-nine?
Two-point-five is one-sixty-nine.
Yep.
Three-point-two-five is two-nineteen.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Julia, just a point of clarification, because a lot of people came to me after that meeting. Just so the public knows, the projected position growth of like that fifty employees, that's based upon requests made by the various department heads.
Correct.
And it's a forecast of what they think they'll need in the future. And just wanted to let the public know that.
Yeah, that's fair.
That's where that number came from.
Yep.
Julia, we gave a one percent increase, and that was on top of the step raise, right?
No.
No.
One percent... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
One percent is just for the matrix adjustment.
Yep.
Or the COLA, as some people call it. They're different, but similar.
So, they got their increment raise, step raise.
They got their performance raise.
And then the one percent on top of that.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. Okay.
Other questions?
And you're recommending a two-point-five to three-point-two-five increase, correct?
Correct. And that strictly depends on your strategy as a commission. So, if you want to be consistent with the collective bargaining unit, then I would encourage you to do the three-point-two-five percent.
You mentioned that of the number of counties that you utilize...
Yeah.
They gave an average, uh, increase of two percent?
Two-point-nine-six was the average, or that was the CPU.
Yeah, I, but the counties overall, that you sampled, those, what, a dozen or so? They were at two percent, right?
Last year, two percent. Yep.
Okay.
We were, we were at one, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Julia, how many positions do we currently are, have open?
Um, five. Now, open and in process are two different things. So open is probably five, in process, I know there's at least thirteen people in the recruitment process.
So five positions are open, which means they've been advertised and we're trying to fill them. And the thirteen means what again?
So
In the process?
The five open positions means they're out on the website and we're currently seeking applications.
Yes.
And then the recruitment process, um, the position is closed or we're currently recruiting for it, um, and they're in some sort of the process. Like for deputy sheriff, um, we're starting interviews, um...
We've stopped taking applications and now we're doing all the other administrative stuff to...
The good stuff.
And there are thirteen of those.
Good questions, anything else?
Have we had, Julia, in the, in the recruitment process, where we have found a person that would, um, fill the position and has turned it down because of the wages that are paid by the county?
Oh, absolutely. Um, I mean, I'll say, I mean, to be fair about the whole situation is, you're not always going to get every applicant, right? But when you consistently see a pattern, that's when it becomes a concerning, especially when you have a two-point-five percent unemployment rate and everybody's trying to, um, get the same people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Julia. Uh, question for Mr. Golden. Do you want us to have our executive session as our board? Or would you like us to go ahead and take recess and go into the other two? And then come back and do the executive and adjourn? I, Mr. Hauser's been sitting here for quite a while, so I'd... So, I can just do a recess, correct? Okay. So right now, what I'd like to do is a recess on our regular, uh, commission agenda. And then I would like to open a regular meeting, um, for our, um, to reconvene as a consolidated board. Um, I know we said the pledge of allegiance earlier today, but I, we're going to say it again. So if you'll join me, please. First, I just need a motion to reconvene as the consolidated board of equalization.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Uh, next, I need a motion to adjourn as the consolidated board of equalization.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Uh, motion carries. Uh, next, we will move on to, um, the county board of equalization agenda. So again, um, to kick that meeting off, we'll go ahead, uh... With that, I would consider a motion to reconvene as the county board of equalization.
So moved. Madam Chair?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. I'd consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then moving on to the regular agenda for the county board of equalization, uh, the first, um, item we have is Wesley Headloff, parcel zero-nine-nine-point-five-one-point-three-one-point-one-zero-one-two.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I believe Mr. Headloff is going to be with us via phone.
Okay. Do we have, Jake, do you have his number?
Sheri was in contact with him as late as Friday.
Well, we'll, we'll try him and if he's not available, we'll go ahead with the, um, Heartland Fields appeals and then come back, circle back if we need to. All right, well, I'll go ahead and take that one then.
Go ahead, Carl.
Okay. Mr., Mr. Headloff, are you, are you with us?
Yeah.
All right, great.
Our appeal is parcel number zero-nine-nine dot five-one dot thirty-one dot one-zero-one-two. It's located at twenty-seven eight-one-seven Cleveland Avenue in Lenox, South Dakota. It's owned by Wesley and Mary Lee Headloff. Uh, it's a single-family home, built in two thousand seventeen, has two-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-four square feet, three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, no lower level finish, sits on five acres. It has a total assessed value of four-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand three-twenty-six. Our next slide shows three comparables to the subject property, um, all located, um, in rural Lincoln County, uh, ranging from point-seven-five acres to four acres. Felt the most comparable to Mr., uh, to the subject property was comparable number three. Um, it is much smaller than the subject property, one-thousand-five-hundred-and-twelve square feet, sold for three-hundred thousand in April of two thousand nineteen. Can see there's a history of, um, it sold also in two thousand thirteen for two-hundred-and-five-thousand-five-hundred. Did not appear to have any updating from the previous sale to the current sale. Our subject property is currently assessed at one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars per square foot. The cost range is between one-hundred-and-thirty-seven and one-hundred-and-forty-nine. The market is indicating a range between one-hundred-and-thirty-eight and two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars per square foot. See where the subject property is located in pink, um, our comparables are in blue. Um, comparable one is relatively close to the subject property. We did have to extend out our range, um, on the other comparables. You can see comparable three, which we felt was the most comparable, was within four to five miles of the subject property. And it's located in the northeast corner of the, the map. Shows a bigger range. Staff is recommending no change to the assessed value.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff by the board? If not, uh, Mr. Headloff?
Yes.
You can go ahead with your presentation.
Okay. So the couple, there's several different things here. So I've got, I did my own comparables of houses that are basically similar, ranch-style houses, not two-story, none of that. And I found multiple different houses that basically they've got lower value. And it's not like I'm asking for a ton of lower values, but some of the difference I'm seeing, for example, like on two-seven, uh, six-eight-two-four-sixty-nine, that sold on seven-twenty-four of nineteen. And that one sold for apparently one-sixty, it's on one acre, but it's got two thousand square foot. And if you do the calculations out, it's a lot lower, um, per square foot cost. And when talking to multiple builders and that, they're saying that you're looking, you should be looking at about a hundred dollars a square foot for house, not a hundred-and-thirty-nine.
What was the address to that property again?
The address is two-seven-six-eight-two-four-sixty-nine.
And that is a manufactured home, correct?
No.
It's what the listing is indicating that you sent to the commission.
Two-seven-six-eight-two-four-sixty-nine is not a manufactured.
Right there.
I do see that the Zillow, the printout has, um, that listed as a manufactured ranch home.
And this is from the appellant?
Right.
These documents?
The document does say that it's a manufactured ranch home.
Yes, it's not a mobile home, though. So a manufactured is just like a normal home. It's basically brought in like, oh, what is that? Uh, it's not a mobile home. So manufactured should not be treated any different than a regular home. Because if they think that, then well, technically mine were because mine came on blocks. Mine was built up with blocks. So not studded walls.
Anything else you'd like us to know, sir?
Uh, and then I also want to know on this other one here, uh, pull that one up. Um, it's one in Lenox and the address is two-two-one South Blair or Blaine Street. So on this listing here, it's listing it as twenty-seven-seventy-six square foot. And that one's saying basically the selling price is about a hundred dollars a square foot. And that's selling right now.
Sir, how old is the roof?
On what?
On your house.
Mine?
Yes.
Uh, probably three years.
And you, are you slab on grade or do you have a basement?
Uh, this is basically, it's built up, so it's not really a full basement. Um, and it's basically brick wall.
Okay. Is it unfinished or finished?
Unfinished.
Do you have any water problems in your basement?
Uh, yep.
What kind?
Uh, basically, if the pump goes bad, it, uh, it can flood.
Okay.
So the pump runs.
And that only happens when the pump goes bad?
Uh, yeah, and it's running constantly.
Okay. So no water seeping through the brick or anything like that? It's just if the sump pump goes down?
Uh, correct, not right now.
Okay.
Now, when it did, uh, when it rained rea- last year, I had to put two sump pumps in.
Have you made any improvements in the last couple of years?
No.
What kind of siding is that, vinyl or wood?
Uh, it's, uh, like that pressboard stuff.
Okay.
And the walls are basically brick. So they're like brick blocks put together.
How much did you pay for it?
Uh, I paid total two-sixty.
And you...
And its per value is two-eighty. And that's what the insurance company came out and valued.
So the total check you wrote for your property was what?
Uh, so with that, and basically I paid thirty for the property plus two-sixty for the house, and that was including the house I tore down on it.
So you paid two-ninety total?
Yep.
And that was a arms-length transaction? You didn't buy that from a friend or a relative?
Correct.
And what you're saying now, just so I understand, your request is you pay, and how many years ago did you pay two-ninety?
Uh, well, basically last year, or not last year, uh, sorry, uh, what was that? Basically, when I bought, when I built the house, was the price. Yeah.
Twenty-seventeen?
Yep.
Okay. And now you're sa- you paid two-ninety, but you're saying it's been devalued in price and it's only worth two-forty-four now?
No, I'm not saying two-forty-four, but I'm not, I'm also saying that not four-sixty.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the nature of your request. In your documents that you submitted to the county, you said you wanted to have the value, the property valued at two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand.
Well, uh...
You're coming off that now?
Uh, where was the two-forty-four?
You put that into your, uh, applicat- your petition documents? You wanted the land valued at fourteen thousand, you wanted the structure valued at two-hundred-and-thirty thousand for a total of two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand? And I think that's in your own handwriting, is that correct?
Uh, no, I don't think that's my document.
Got your, I got it here in front of you, it's got your signature on it, dated February twenty-third, twenty-one. It's got a doc you signed. It's got your signature on there. It's not a gotcha question, I'm just trying to figure out what you want the property valued at.
Okay. Well, basically, I don't want it at four-sixty-two. You know, I'm fine with saying, okay, three-sixty, I'm fine with that. But at four-sixty-two, that's like, I can't sell it for that. And I've got the sewage treatment plant right down the road from me, which basically sort of devalues it. And it's like, so I'm looking at house, you know, the house, fine, I paid two-eighty for it. If the house is valued at two-eighty, I don't care.
Okay.
It's just, I'm, I'm looking at all the other numbers and saying, okay, well, all of a sudden this year, the, the land, land value went up to a hundred thousand, when last year it was, what, like thirty thousand?
So you're okay at three-sixty and the county is at
Yeah.
four-sixty-two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's what I talked to real estate agents and they said, you probably could get three-sixty. But they cannot guarantee I can get four-sixty-two.
Sir, what's the other building on the property?
Uh, it's just a pole barn.
And how big is that pole barn?
Uh, it's a, I think, a forty by thirty.
Thank you.
If I may address, uh, the appellant in the, the amount of construction cost?
Go ahead.
Is that materials only?
No, that's material and labor.
And who, who was the labor?
Uh, so I basically contracted all, out all the labor. So I had, uh, companies do drywall, I had Dakota ICF do the, uh, walls. Um, and basically multiple different contractors.
So did you act as the general then, sir?
Yeah. Yeah, I basically sorted it.
Okay. Anything else either from staff, the commission, or Mr. Heidlaff? If not, I'd consider a motion.
And I also give value on the, uh, what is that, the shed, basically I had the shed, when I put the shed up, it was, uh, I think total cost for the shed was fifteen thousand to have it put up. So that's pretty, it's actually pretty close in value.
I'm gonna make a motion to value the land at ninety-four thousand, two-hundred-nine, and to value the structure at three-hundred-sixteen thousand.
And the other buildings?
Uh, just value all, um, the other buildings at twenty-two thousand, nine-oh-five.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
What's the total?
Uh, I'll add that up for you here.
Four-thirty-three, one-one-four.
Thank you. Your thumbs are quicker than mine this morning.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No.
Motion carries, we will move on to Heartland Fields, items two through fifty-seven, and what's the best and most efficient way to handle this, Carla, you've got a plan?
According to, uh, legal counsel, we have to address them individually.
All right. Well, you can go ahead when you're ready, do you, um, and I know Mr. Golden's not down, do you want comment or questions from the board members, or do you want to run through your presentation on each of them, how do, how does the board want to handle it?
Is there any kind of stipulation between you guys, was there any agreement?
No.
Is there a stipulation as to how we're gonna handle all these today, is there a waiver of going through all of them? Uh, by the appellant?
Well-
He's nodding his head behind you, Carla.
I would need him to go on the record if that's the case, um, but we're still gonna have to vote on each one individually.
Yes. So this is a, we did meet with the appellant on Thurs- last Thursday. Uh, this is a letter that was given to me, I'm guessing the commission also received it. You know, as for the, I'm not gonna go through the entire letter in regards to some of his, um, comments, but I can tell you that we did look, we, we looked for a compromise. And how we did that is, right now, Heartland Fields is a condo unit, and it's, um, within a neighborhood. So the compromise that I did look at is, okay, let's treat the condo unit as its individual neighborhood, um, but that indicated a larger value would be needed. Um, right now, it's being incorporated within a neighborhood that received a five percent adjustment on it, uh, for the twenty-twenty-one assessment year, so I wanted to be, be sure that, you know, that is, was in accordance with the condo units itself. The compromise that was given to us by the appellant looked something like this, this is exactly the document that we were presented on Thursday, they lumped some, they lumped it all together as fifty-two units. These fifty-two units are not equally distributed, I mean, these fifty-two units are two-bedroom, two-baths, two-bedroom, one bath, three-bedroom, you know, one bath, it, the, there's not a take a value and divide it by fifty-two compromise, each one was valued individually.
Yeah, they, they didn't go through individually and put prices on them, they just, instead of taking one hour to do all their homework, they wanted to take five minutes to do all the homework. Right?
I, I'm not gonna speak for them, but yes. You know, some of the discussion that took place, and Mr. Hauser here, um, can have his, his moments with you, um, was in regards to, you know, the tax part of it. You know, and I don't have any control over the taxes, it's a valuation, if you go three-quarters of a mile north, you're in the Sioux Falls School District, this is one of their units, this is what they're paying for, for this unit in this school district, if they were just three-quarters of a mile north, this is what it would pay, I mean, I don't have control over that. It's twenty percent difference just between school districts. And when they talk, when they're talking the tax, they want a valuation change to help with their tax bill, and I don't have control of it, I, I do the assessment part, and the assess- assessment is to treat them all equally. We have other units in that complex that are owner-occupied and rental, they want us to treat this as a rental and do an, uh, an apartment. We've got other rental units within that same complex that they wouldn't be equally assessed.
I have a question, um, for Mr. Hauser, Mr. Hauser, do you have an individual presentation for each of these items? And your challenge to value? So-
This is where I think we have the biggest discrepancy, is that we wish to have those three buildings, fifty-two units, done under a multifamily valuation.
But that is not how they're listed.
I grant you that, but that is how they're used.
Okay, so, and these are just my thoughts, and other commissioners may have different thoughts. If you want it to be considered multifamily, then that's how it needs to be set up, that's my two cents, these are individual. The auditor has individually valued them, so it's very hard for us to sit here as a board and consider your lump sum request to have them treated differently than what they actually are. So I, everybody's gonna have a fair shake in saying what they want to say. So I'm trying to figure out, we have the individual valuations, so Equalization Office can sure go through those individual valuations, but you're not prepared as we sit here today to address each and every unit.
That's not what I'm after. What I wanted to be considered for is treating it like we would any of the other multifamily, because that's the way we use it. I understand your point that it's set up as a condo and there are individual parcels.
What legal basis would you have for us to do that? Like, give us something to hang our hat on.
What legal bas- I mean, it's being used that way, it's used as a lump sum, we do all those, those three buildings are all the same. I don't have any qualms with the other front three buildings, it's what the use is being used at now.
I just don't think as a board, we can parse out your appeal to the extent, because we do have to, we have to address each individual.
Wi- let me go back to how this all came about, all right, when we built these in two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, we built them during the crunch time.
I understand all that, but I'm just, I'm looking for the legal argument that-
Legal argument is what it's being used as, that's all I can do.
Mr. Hauser, you know, you're asking for, relatively speaking, you're asking for like a half-million dollar reduction, I got that, right? Five-hundred-two-thousand-ninety-four dollars?
That was the compromise, yeah.
Right. I think to the commissioner's point, if it were me, I would have taken the time to go through these individually, because you're looking for a half-million dollars, what's a half-million dollars worth to you? Should've went through all of these individually and put what you value the land at, and what you value the structure at.
Sure, you know-
That would help us as a board, certainly would help me, to figure out, because what they're saying is, what the Department of Equalization is saying is, they're all different units, and I understand your argument, you're saying, hey, I want to value that multifamily, I don't think that's a legal possibility. So given that, do you have, and, and given the fact that they are different bedrooms and bathrooms, et cetera, do you, in order to justify your half-million dollar request here, can you break them out for us?
Sure, absolutely, there's seventeen two-bedroom, two-baths, there are thirty-four one-bedroom, one-baths, and there's one three-bedroom, three-bath.
Seventeen two-bedroom?
Two baths.
Two-bedroom, two-bath?
All exactly the same.
And then what was the next number you gave?
Thirty-four one-bedrooms, all exactly the same.
One-bedroom, one-bath? Okay.
And then there's one three-bedroom, three-bath. And we're just doing the fifty-two parcels, so-
Sorry, three-bedroom, how many baths?
Three baths.
Three baths, three and three, okay. So seventeen, two-bed, two-bath, thirty-four, one-bed, one-bath, one, three-bedroom, three-bath, and that's it, that's what we're considering here.
Some of the other parcels they had were the fitness center, which we didn't argue about.
Common areas, things, no? I'm getting the, I'm getting the north-south from the department here, what are they saying?
Well, I'm counting up.
Can, I'm sorry, can you step up to the microphone, please?
According to our records, I'm counting nineteen two-bedrooms, two-baths.
He's changing his appeal from fifty-two par- fifty-six parcels to fifty-two now, so there's a discrepancy from when you filed them out. If you don't want to appeal the apartment, the condo units in the other buildings, which are a part of this, you need a parcel.
Okay, well, let's stay on that, which items on our agenda are no longer part of the appeal? I've got fifty-six, there's four that are no issue, which four?
I'm not sure, I mean-
It's, well, I can't tell from the parcel items. Uh, yeah, I can too. So if you look-
Just the last four digits of the parcel number.
So A-one-oh-one, C-one-oh-two, C-three-oh-one. Where's it, where I don't see it, or if, yeah, right there, so E-one-oh-one, that says gym.
It's not gym, but gym isn't a membership, fitness center.
So the last four parcel is E-one-zero-one.
Correct.
You are removing those from your appeal, correct?
Correct.
That's agenda item twenty-three, right?
Uh, it would be if I'm reading that correctly, so items two, three, and four, and twenty-three of our current agenda are being removed from your appeal, sir. Correct? Mr. Hauser?
I'm sorry, I wasn't-
You're removing those items from the appeal?
Yes.
Thank you for that, um, so you've got the parcel numbers there, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm gonna run through each of these with you just real quickly, uh, what kind of unit is item five?
The D-one-oh-one?
Yep.
That is a one-bedroom, one-bath.
Okay, let's keep going, what's number six?
It's a one-bedroom, one-bath.
D-one-oh-three?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
D-one-oh-four?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
D-one-oh-five?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
And then D-one-oh-six, which is item ten on our agenda?
Is, is a two-bedroom, two-bath.
Okay, and D-two-zero-one?
That's a one-bedroom.
And one-bath?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
Uh, D-two-zero-two?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
D-two-zero-three?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
D-two-zero-four?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
D-two-zero-five?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
D-two-zero-six?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
D-three-zero-one?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
D-three-zero-two?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
D-three-zero-three?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
D-three-zero-four?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
D-three-zero-five?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
D-three-zero-six?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
E-one-zero-one, we're taking that off, that's the one that you withdrew.
That's the gym.
So then I'll move on to E-one-zero-three?
Three-bedroom, three-bath, that's the only one.
E-one-zero-four?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
E-one-zero-five?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
E-one-zero-six?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
E-two-zero-one?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
E-two-zero-two?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
E-two-zero-three?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
E-two-zero-four?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
E-two-zero-five?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
E-two-zero-six?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
E-three-zero-one?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
E-three-zero-two?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
E-three-zero-three?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
E-three-zero-four?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
E-three-zero-five?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
E-three-zero-six?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
F-one-zero-one?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
F-one-zero-two?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
F-one-zero-three?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
F-one-zero-four?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
F-one-zero-five?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
F-one-zero-six?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
F-two-zero-one?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
F-two-zero-two?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
F-two-zero-three?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
F-two-zero-four?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
F-two-zero-five?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
F-two-zero-six?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
F-three-zero-one?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
F-three-zero-two?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
F-three-zero-three?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
F-three-zero-four?
One-bedroom, one-bath.
F-three-zero-five?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
And F-three-zero-six?
Two-bedroom, two-bath.
Okay, so at least now we know what all the parcels are, it's your testimony that the one-bedroom, one-baths are all identical?
Yes.
Is that true, Carla?
Oh, they absolutely are.
Okay, uh, you've said no, they say that's not true, I'd like to hear from you on those.
So the lower, um, units have slab for their, you know, additional structure, and the upper units have a deck, so that's the valuation difference.
Okay, so it's fair to say that the numbers, the last four where they say like, whether, you know, D-one-zero-three, the, the one-hundreds, those are slab on grade, correct? And you agree with that, Mr. Hauser, okay. And then, do all of the other one-bed, one-bath units have decks? Okay, so D-one-oh-one, D-one-oh-two, D-one-oh-three, and D-one-oh-four, D-one-oh-five, D-one-oh-six are all slab? Correct?
Correct.
So, the first thing I'd like to do is- So, the first thing I'd like to do is address the one-bed, one-bath slab-on-grade units. And I'm gonna just clarify something. So if the last three digits are one oh one, so we, cause we've got different units here. So if you're looking at the agenda, if you want to do that. So I've got five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten are slab-on-grade. Then I've got, um, starting with agenda item twenty-four, E one oh three, one oh four, one oh five, one oh six, those are all slab-on-grade.
Correct.
And then the same would be true for F one oh one, one oh, F one oh two, F one oh three, F one oh four, F one oh five, and F one oh six.
Correct.
But items nine and ten are two-bedroom, two-bath?
I, I've got all that. Right now, I'm just, what's slab-on-grade? Okay. So other than whether they're slab-on-grade or have a deck, are they the same?
Yes.
Very good. All right. Mr. Hauser, what do you, what is your request for valuing one-bed, one-bath slab-on-grade? And I hope somebody is writing this down.
Bas- basically, let's, I'm just gonna lump it up, and the one-bedrooms would be seventy thousand.
So you're saying the value of the building or the unit parcel for the structure is seventy thousand for the slab-on-grade, one-bedroom, one-bath?
Correct.
That's your request?
That's the request. Close enough.
And, and no opposition to the land value?
No, no oppo- no. We talked about that before.
And do you have the land values?
Eight thousand, nine hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. So we are only talking about one-bed, one-bath slab-on-grade. Carla, do you have a value for that type of an parcel? For the structure?
Eighty-five thousand, six ninety. That's the total. Okay, seventy-six thousand, seven ninety.
So you guys are six thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars off on the structure.
If I could simplify this, I'm not sure where it's.
I'm trying to.
So, in their compromise, they were looking for just a flat ten percent reduction. Say, okay, whatever your value is, we want ten percent of it. That was their compromise. Is that the total you're trying to get to today?
The total, I'm, I'm trying to figure out where he is at because the stuff he submitted, in my opinion, wasn't submitted the way it should've been submitted. So I'm trying to get, do you have a standard value for structure and land for the one-bedroom, one-bath slabs?
For these particular units, we have seventy-six thousand, seven ninety.
And does that?
One bedroom, one bath on slab.
One bedroom, one bath on slab, seventy-six nine, seven ninety. Okay, and then what do you have on the land?
Eighty-nine thousand, eighty-nine hundred, excuse me.
Now, just, I'm trying to make a clear record here. Sir, you have no appeal with the land value of eighty-nine hundred for these units?
No, no, in the last, you weren't here, but in the last meeting, we said.
All right. So Carla, do you want to go through your presentation for the one-bed, one-bath slabs that we've identified?
These are some comparable properties that have sold within the complex. They are, they range from nine hundred and twenty-two square feet. We do it by square foot because we don't, we don't look at two bedrooms being priced at X amount. We're looking at total square foot. Um, so our pricing is based on price per square foot, not price per bed, bath.
I understand. I just want to hear your presentation.
So our three comparables, um, four comparables range between nine hundred and twenty-two square feet up to thirteen hundred square feet. And they're being priced between, uh, nine, eighty-nine dollars per square foot to a hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot. The subject property is being valued at ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents per square foot. The market is indicating between a hundred and three and a hundred and nineteen per square foot. That's why our recommendation is no change. The subject properties are being assessed right in the middle of the, um, market range and within the cost approach to value.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hauser, is there anything else you would like to say, um, regarding the one-bed, one-bath slab-on-grade or
No.
evaluations that the Department of Equalization has put on them?
I really don't have anything.
Okay. So, I'm gonna take these in turn by what they are, okay? So I'm gonna start with item five on the agenda, which is two-eight-zero-point-three-six-point-zero-zero-D-one-zero-one. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we value the land at eighty-nine hundred dollars and we value the structure at seventy-four thousand.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Number six. Uh, parcel two-eight-zero-point-three-six-point-zero-zero-point-D-one-zero-two.
Madam Chair, I move that we value the land at eighty-nine hundred. We value the structure at seventy-four thousand.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Item, next item, parcel two-eight-zero-three-six-zero-zero-D-one-zero-three.
Madam Chair, I move that we value the land at eighty-nine hundred dollars. We value the structure at seventy-four thousand.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Sean?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to item eight. Parcel two-eight-zero-three-six-zero-zero-D-one-zero-four.
Madam Chair, I move that we value the land at eighty-nine hundred dollars and we value the structure at seventy-four thousand.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
We need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sean.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And I'd like to go to item twenty-four on our agenda. Oh, excuse me, I take that back. Item twenty-five.
Madam Chair, I move that we value the land at eighty-nine hundred dollars. We value the structure at seventy-four thousand.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Moving on to item forty. Is it, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move that we value the land at eighty-nine hundred dollars, value the structure at seventy-four thousand.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to item forty-one, it's parcel two-eight-zero-three-six-zero-zero-F-one-zero-two.
Madam Chair, I move we value the land at eighty-nine hundred dollars. We value the structure at seventy-four thousand.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Item forty-two, which is parcel two-eight-zero-three-six-zero-zero-F-one-zero-three.
Madam Chair, I move that we value the land at eighty-nine hundred dollars. We value the structure at seventy-four thousand.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Item forty-three, parcel two-eight-zero-three-six-zero-zero-F-one-zero-four.
Madam Chair, I move we value the land at eighty-nine hundred dollars. We value the structure at seventy-four thousand.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the, or, excuse me, I need a second.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Okay, I'm gonna circle back. Um, next thing I want to talk about, um, sir, the two-bedroom, two-bedrooms on slab. What value do you want to put on those structures?
Well, I'd like to do ten percent off, which is ninety thousand.
Based on what?
Based off of that reduction, the ten percent of the new assessment.
Well, what's your argument with the value that's been placed by the, by the Department of Equalization's office?
Same as the one-bedrooms.
Just that they're slab-on-grade?
They, they are slab-on-grade, those, yeah.
Staff have any response?
I'm just gonna go back to the equalization part of it. I mean, we're, we're treating these units different than these, and these are owner-occupied, and these are rental, and these are rental, and we're sharing hallways, and we're sharing common space, and my job is to equalize. I'm not gonna ten percent this. I took an oath, and my oath was to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the South Dakota laws and rules and that's it. I mean, we came up with a value equally. It didn't matter who owned it. It didn't matter what the use was. They are condo units. They're all being assessed equally. And that's what we did. My presentation is before you. It's the same presentation for all fifty-eight units. He backed out of four units. They're the same units, different buildings.
I understand. I, I understand what you're saying. Does the, does the board have any questions for staff?
What's the staff's valuation on these property, on this subset of properties we're talking about?
We have a total assessed value, land at eight thousand, nine hundred, structure value at one hundred thousand, nine hundred, um, for a total valuation of a hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred.
Mr. Hauser, you're saying that since these are slab-on-grade, um, they ought to be valued at ninety thousand?
I guess so. That's not what I was after.
Well, what are you after?
I think they're just too high. They're valued too high.
Okay, but you're not telling us why.
Just comparables to the other, and I'm still comparing them to multifamily.
So you're comparing them to multifamily, which is not the same use?
If we use their comparables and we take their range, if we use the bottom set of their range instead of in the middle.
All right. Do you have those numbers, Commissioner Ehrens?
It was eighty-nine hundred for the land and a hundred thousand, nine hundred.
So I'm gonna go ahead and, um, I'm gonna move this along because we have seen the, um, Director of Equalization's presentations on, um, on how she valued these properties. So, um, move on to item nine, two-bedroom, two-bath slab, um, which, but it's parcel two-eight-zero-three-six-zero-zero-D-one-zero-five. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we value the land at eighty-nine hundred, we value the structure at ninety-eight thousand.
I have a motion and a second, or I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Carla, Carla, do you want to write that?
Move on to item ten.
I move that we value the land at eighty-nine hundred dollars and we value the structure at ninety-eight thousand.
Motion, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we will move on to item twenty-six, which is parcel two-eight-zero-three-six-zero-zero-E-one-zero-five. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move we value the land at eighty-nine hundred, value the structure at ninety-eight thousand.
I'll second.
Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we have, so that was item twenty-seven, correct, Sean?
That was twenty-six.
That was twenty-six. We'll move on to item twenty-seven, parcel two-eight-zero-three-six-zero-zero-E-one-zero-six.
Madam Chair, I move that we value the land at eighty-nine hundred. We value the structure at ninety-eight thousand.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Um, move on to item forty-four, parcel two-eight-zero-three-six-zero-zero-F-one-zero-five. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move we value the land at eighty-nine hundred. We value the structure at ninety-eight thousand.
Thank you. Sean, call the roll, please.
I need a second.
Second.
Oh, gosh, getting good at that, aren't I? Thank you, Commissioner Gibbon. Uh, go ahead and call the roll, Sean.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Item forty-five, parcel two-eight-zero-three-six-zero-zero-F-one-zero-six.
Madam Chair, I move we value the land at eighty-nine hundred. We value the structure at ninety-eight thousand.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Now, we're gonna keep going through these like we are, but I, I do want to say that this coming in and asking for this percentage increase and not having it submitted the right way, that should never happen again. It just shouldn't. Um, cause you don't just, you shouldn't just get a flat reduction when we haven't really even heard the reason um, for this reduction. So, I think the commission's using their discretion right now. I'm gonna be voting no on the next ones because I, I'm gonna go with our office because they did their, they did their work. They did their job. And you're not coming to us with anything other than a request that, from what I can tell, really isn't based on anything that I can hang my hat on. So unless you have that, I'm gonna be a no on the rest of these, and that's just my take on it, that I'm gonna, um, vote with the people that I know did the work to come in here and give us individual evaluations. Those are my two cents. Um, would you agree, sir, that the other one-bed, all the other one-bed, one-baths are the same and they have, all have a deck?
Yes.
Okay. Is, do we need to differentiate whether it's second level, third level?
No, they're all the same.
They're all the same. All right, so Carla, did you put an individual value on the one-bed, one-bath on the upper levels?
Yes, we have a land value of eight thousand, nine hundred.
Yes, we have a land value of eight thousand nine hundred, structure value at seventy-seven thousand seven twenty.
What wa... I'm sorry, what was that?
Structure value at seventy-seven thousand seven twenty.
And the land?
Eight thousand nine hundred.
So that stayed the same. All right, so I'm gonna start. I guess, uh, Mr. Hauser, I'll have, do you wanna say anything about the one-bed, one-bath parcels?
No, they're the, they're all the same.
And what was your proposed evaluation?
Like I said before, I just think they're too high, so I wanted them reduced ten percent.
Based on what?
The value of other apartment buildings, like I keep saying. You can make those whatever you want.
You, you don't have any reason? You're not trying to differentiate them on the basis of where they're at in the apartment, or the markability, or anything?
No, 'cause they all have elevators. We built them all the same. We don't differentiate between the floors.
Mr. Hauser did provide his comparables in the initial presentation that we had on this. They were multifamily units, if I recall correctly, and Carla, can you confirm that?
Um, there was an appraisal submitted by the appellant's, and, um, that, that was their documentation to get a reduction.
So...
Documentation that they used to, um, appeal their value.
So it was a, I will say, apples-to-oranges comparison. The people that own these parcels, they can do things to their individual units to improve them on the interior. It's not the same as a multifamily, where people, generally speaking, cannot do that. But with that, um, does either party have any other comments regarding the one-bedroom, one-bath with decks? Okay. If not, I would consider a motion on item eleven.
Madam Chair, make a motion to value the structure at eighty-nine hundred, va... or, excuse me. Make a motion to value the land at eighty-nine hundred, and to value the structure at seventy-six thousand.
Have a motion and a second.
I'll second.
Thanks. Bad habit. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
No. Next item is item twelve, parcel two eight zero three six zero zero D two zero two.
Madam Chair, make a motion to value the land at eighty-nine hundred, and to value the structure at seventy-six thousand.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
No. Item thirteen, parcel two eight zero three six zero zero D two zero three.
Madam Chair, make a motion to value the land at eighty-nine hundred, to value the structure at seventy-six thousand.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
No. Moving on to item fourteen, parcel two eight zero three six zero zero D two zero four.
Madam Chair, make a motion to value the land at eighty-nine hundred, to value the structure at seventy-six thousand.
Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
No. Then it looks like the next one-bath that I have, one-bed, one-bath is item seventeen.
Yes. Madam Chair, make a motion to value the land at eighty-nine hundred, to value the structure at seventy-six thousand.
Thank you, and just for purposes of the record, that's parcel two eight zero three six zero zero D three zero one.
Second.
Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
No. Gonna go ahead with item eighteen, which is parcel two eight zero three six zero zero D three zero two.
Madam Chair, make a motion to value the land at eighty-nine hundred, value the structure at seventy-six thousand.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
No. Item nineteen, parcel two eight zero three six zero zero D three zero three.
Madam Chair, make a motion to value the land at eighty-nine hundred, to value the structure at seventy-six thousand.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
No. Item twenty, um, parcel two eight zero three six zero zero D three zero four. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion to value the land at eighty-nine hundred, value the structure at seventy-six thousand.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
No.
Madam Chair, I just need to take a two-minute break. Is that possible?
That is. We'll be in recess for five minutes.
So we're doing the one bedroom, one baths, correct?
Two bedroom.
Two baths.
Two bedroom, two baths.
With decks.
With decks. So... Did we do parcel ending D two zero five? Alright, that's a two bedroom, two bath. We're still doing one bedrooms.
Oh yeah, we are. I'm sorry. My apologies.
Alright, I'm sorry. I thought I was losing my mind there for a second. Alright. So I was, um... We had done the two bedroom, two bath that were on slab and then we were working through the one bedroom, one bath with decks. So then I am on item twenty-eight.
Yes.
And that's parcel two eight zero three six zero zero E two zero one.
Madam Chair, make a motion to value the land at eighty-nine hundred, value the structure at seventy-six thousand.
Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Um, we've got, I'm gonna group, uh, it'd be agenda items twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one. Those are all one bedroom, one bath, uh, with a deck and those are parcel numbers two eight zero three six zero zero E two zero two, E two zero three, and E two zero four. But before I do that, uh, Mr. Hauser, are you okay with us, um, doing one vote for those three parcels?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, in light of the waiver, I, uh, make a motion, uh, to value the three structures just referenced by the chair as land value at eighty-nine hundred and structure value at seventy-six thousand.
Thank you. Sean, will you...
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Then that would take us to items... I'm gonna do the same thing with item thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six, and thirty-seven. Those are all one bedroom, one bath units. Uh, the parcel numbers are two eight zero three six zero zero E three zero one, E three zero two, E three zero three, and E three zero four. Consider a motion.
Mr. Hauser, do you consent to that?
Yes.
Uh, Madam Chair, in light of the waiver, I make a motion of, for the four aforementioned properties by the chair to be, have the land valued at eighty-nine hundred dollars and have the structure valued at seventy-six thousand.
Thank you. Second. Alright, thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Alright, um, then I'm looking at items forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine. Those are all one bedroom, one bath parcels. The parcel numbers are two eight zero three six zero zero F two zero one, F two zero two, F two zero three, and F two zero four. And I would like to, uh, group those together for our consideration. Uh, Mr. Hauser, are you agreeable to that?
Yes.
Thank you. Consider a motion?
Madam Chair, in light of the waiver by Mr. Hauser, I move to have the four aforementioned properties have the land valued at eighty-nine hundred dollars and have the structure valued at seventy-six thousand.
Thank you.
Second.
Sean?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Um, and then items fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five. Again, those are all one bedroom, one bath units with a deck. Um, I'd like to lump these again together. Mr. Hauser, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Um, I'd consider a motion.
Madam Chair, in light of the waiver by Mr. Hauser, I move to value the four aforementioned properties, um, at, uh, land value of eighty-nine hundred and a structure value of seventy-six thousand.
Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Alright, now I'm circling back to the two bedroom, two bath units with a deck. And that would start with items fifteen and sixteen. Um, parcels two eight zero three six zero zero D two zero five and D two zero six. Um, Mr. Hauser, is there anything, uh, special that you'd like us to know about those? And, um, what is your proposed valuation for the two bedroom, two bath parcels that have a deck?
Versus the other one, I guess ninety-nine thousand.
And that is what you're saying? You're requesting for the structure?
For the structure, yes. The land, the land's eighty-nine hundred.
And you have no objection to the land?
No.
And what is your ninety-nine thousand dollar, uh, proposed valuation based on?
Just based off of reduction in value.
Um, reduction in value in what? I'm sorry.
Be square footed. It's just price per square foot.
And for that, you use the multi-family unit comparables that you presented?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to group item fifteen and sixteen together again. Mr. Hauser, do you have any objection to that?
No.
Alright, then, um, I'd consider a motion on those.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? What's county, what's county assessors', uh, uh, proposed value on that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, we have parcel number D two oh five, the land value eight, eight thousand nine hundred, the structure value at a hundred and one thousand eight seventy. Same for D two oh six. For a total valuation of a hundred and ten thousand seven seventy.
Thank you.
This is agenda items fifteen and sixteen?
It is. Consider a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion on agenda items fifteen and sixteen in light of the waiver. Value the land at eighty-nine hundred, value the structure at one hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Um, next two bedrooms that I have on our agenda are items twenty-one and twenty-two. And those have decks. The parcel numbers, uh, respectively are two eight zero three six zero zero D three zero five and two eight zero three six six zero zero D three zero six. And are you requesting the same value for these two bedrooms?
Yes, yes, those are the same.
Okay, and that's, your proposed is ninety-nine thousand and eighty-nine hundred on the land?
Correct.
And, uh, the department is, uh, the same, one oh one eight seventy on the, um, on the structure itself and then the eighty-nine hundred on the land?
Correct.
Alright. Uh, Mr. Hauser, do you have any objection to me, uh, lumping items, uh, these two parcels which are items twenty-one and twenty-two on the agenda?
No.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, in light of the waiver, make a motion to value the, uh, land of the aforementioned structures on agenda items twenty-one and twenty-two, value the land at eighty-nine hundred, and value the structure at one hundred thousand.
Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Um, next two bedroom, two bath that we have with a deck, I believe are items thirty-two and thirty-three on our agenda. Those are parcels two eight zero three six zero zero E two zero five and two eight zero three six zero zero E two zero six for consideration. Uh, Mr. Hauser, are those the same numbers as the last agenda item?
Correct.
Okay, and staff, uh, are your numbers the same for those two agenda items?
E two zero five, we have a land value of eight thousand nine hundred, a structure value of a hundred and one thousand nine fifty on both E two oh five and E two oh six. For a total valuation of a hundred and ten thousand eight fifty.
For each parcel?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser, do you have any objection to us handling those jointly?
No.
Thank you. With that, I'd consider a motion?
Madam Chair, in light of the waiver by Mr. Hauser, I move to value the land of the aforementioned, two aforementioned structures at eighty-nine hundred and value the structure at one hundred thousand.
Aye, second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Moving on to items thirty-eight and thirty-nine, uh, those are both two bedroom, two bath parcels, uh, that have a deck. Um, parcel numbers are two eight zero three six zero zero E three zero five, two eight zero three six zero zero E three zero six. And I'm assuming the same numbers apply. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And, Mr. Hauser, I'm assuming you don't object to us handling those together?
Correct.
Thank you. Consider a motion.
Madam Chair, in light of the waiver, I move to, uh, put the land value of those, of thirty, agenda items thirty-eight and thirty-nine at eighty-nine hundred dollars and a value of the structure at one hundred thousand.
Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Okay, the last four bedrooms that I have, um, are gonna be item fifty, fifty-one, fifty-six, and fifty-seven on our agenda. So respectively, those parcel numbers are two eight zero three six zero zero F two zero five, ending F two zero six, ending F three zero five, and ending F three zero six. Mr. Hauser, do you have any, um, problem or objection to us handling those together?
No.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, uh, in light of the waiver, uh, I move to value agenda items, uh, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-six, fifty-seven with land value of eighty-nine hundred, structure value of one hundred thousand.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Alright. Circling back again.
Number twenty-four?
I think that was the only one, and that was a three bedroom, three bath on slab, if I recall correctly. Is that true, sir?
Correct.
Alright. And first I'm gonna ask our, um, Director of Equalization, what is the value that you placed on this parcel, which is parcel two eight zero three six zero zero E one zero three?
We have a land value of thirteen thousand three forty and a structure value of a hundred and seven thousand two eighty for a total valuation of a hundred and twenty thousand six twenty.
Thank you. And, Mr. Hauser, you have a valuation that you've placed on the structure?
I'd put it at a hundred and five thousand.
And that's based on what?
Square footage. It is a little bigger than the two bedrooms.
Using the comparables that you previously provided to the county?
Correct.
And what about the land?
Lands, we'll leave that at the thirteen thousand three forty 'cause it is a little bigger.
Alright. I'd consider a motion, if there are no other questions.
Madam Chair, I move, uh, to value the land at thirteen thousand three forty and to value the structure at one hundred six thousand.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
No. I think we got all of them. Can somebody confirm that with me? Sean, do you have?
All I have left is adjournment, ma'am.
Okay. What's that?
Do we have executive session?
We are not back on our regular, yet. Um, so right now I'd consider a motion to adjourn as the County Board of Equalization.
So moved.
Aye, second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Thanks. Sorry that was so painful. Other than, we need an executive session with our State's Attorney's Office.
Madam Chair, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two, sub one and sub three and sub four.
Aye, second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Great, I consider a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes, consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.